All right. We'll get a little settled down here and start the meeting. Welcome, everyone. This is the City of Everett Planning Commission for Tuesday, April 2, 2019. Can we have roll call, please?
Chair back.
Here.
Commissioner Labra.
Here.
Commissioner Zelinski.
Here.
Commissioner McGinn.
Here.
All right. Has anybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Any corrections or? Does anybody want to move?
Move to approve the minutes.
You did?
I wasn't here.
Second. I couldn't hear you.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Abstain.
Commissioner Labra?
Yes.
Chair back.
Yes, but we can't adopt them, yes.
No, I have to wait.
So when, if Commissioner Yanasek makes it, we might interrupt what we're doing and go back to the minutes and see if we can adopt them. All right. Does anybody have any reports or events or exciting things to share?
I'm sorry, just going back to the last item. I think it just requires, under the bylaws, a majority of the quorum. It doesn't require four votes for passing a motion.
Oh, okay.
So in case Commissioner Yanasek doesn't make it tonight, then he can still act. It just requires a majority of the quorum.
Okay. Oh, terrific. Thank you. My vote was yes as well.
So they're approved.
Indeed. Did anyone have a report or anything they wanted to share? All right, so moving right along. Do we have staff comments?
Only that we'll give you next week off for a change and no special meetings anticipated in April or May.
Oh, terrific. Thank you. All right, at this time, is there anybody? Oh, sorry.
And we'll meet in two weeks on the 16th.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
At this time, is there anybody who wants to speak to the planning commission on an item that is not on the agenda? All right. I think we're going to have a nice, quick meeting. Let's move right along to item number one. Dave, I assume that you are in charge of this.
Yes. David Tyler, planning staff. Just a quick, little bit of background. This is a public hearing on proposed revisions to the city's sign code, which is EMC Chapter 1936, as well as some of the consistency changes that will need to be made to other parts of the zoning code. Title 15, which is a local project review procedures ordinance, Title 18, which is land division ordinance, and again, additional amendments to the zoning code for consistency. And just along the way of additional background, what's driving these changes are two main factors. One is the city's ongoing effort to update, streamline, simplify its code regulations on development issues. And so you've seen metro, you've seen critical areas, you've seen parking, and this is the next step in that process. So we want to make the regulations simpler, less complex, less spread out through the code, as they've tended to sprawl over the years out into other chapters. And so we'll bring all the sign regulations back into the sign chapter of the zoning code, 1936. And then the other major driver behind the changes is recent court cases dealing with free speech as it relates to sign regulations. There was the one Supreme Court case, Gilbert, which addressed that, and there have been other cases as well. I can't really brief you on those, but altogether, they really sort of start to paint a picture of content-neutral regulations and what cities are supposed to do. that our code is consistent with those court cases. So as far as the process up to this point, we've had three briefings starting back in late last year. We've done outreach to a number of local sign companies. We basically looked through the roles of permit applications and found out who was submitting the most applications and put them on our mailing list for all things. And we've been circulating drafts. We have been hearing from some of them. Berry Sign Systems has provided a lot of helpful comments, as well as Fast Signs. We've met with them as well. They're a local firm franchise, I believe, but their closest shop is over on Colby. We have done a CEPA review and completed a public comment period. And we've conducted quite exhaustive internal review of the sign changes, including review by the legal department, as well as Steve Inglesby and the Land Use Group, who have been looking at sign permit applications. And we've also done a little bit of testing of the new regulations to see, okay, how do they hold up under some of the current crop of sign permit applications that we're getting? So just a quick presentation to summarize mainly some of the comments that we've received and the responses to those comments and how we've incorporated them into the draft regulations. So there was a question that came up at the last meeting regarding flags and needing to make sure that we don't define them so closely to, I think it was feather signs, that we can't tell the difference in the definition. So we did amend that to say flags really are intended to represent a country or a group. So just a little qualifier there. Monument signs, there was a comment at the last meeting requesting that the city require a setback for monument signs. And so we looked at that and have made a change. So we've required a three-foot setback from the sidewalk, or if no sidewalk, then three feet from the property line. It's possible that in some circumstances, three feet from the sidewalk would still be within the public right-of-way due to extra right-of-way. And in that case, somebody who wants to propose that could, but they would need a right-of-way use permit to do it. So we'd have ample opportunity to look at, you know, view issues, clearances, safety concerns, so on. Cabinet signs, that's been one that's come up a couple of times. Basically, we started at six square feet in sign category A, and then due to comments received, we changed that to 12. And the latest revision were at 20 square feet in sign category A and B. And I've got a couple of examples here. This is just kind of a standard cabinet sign. They're not super attractive. This one in particular has, you know, some exposed conduit, and you can see sort of the segment lines in the different panels on that sign. So it's, they're not super attractive, and that's why we really wanted to try to contain them and encourage other types of sign designs. And you saw this graphic last time. We've made a little adjustment to it by adding the sign in the middle. So the one on the right was the 12-square-foot standard. The one on the left was 30 square feet, which I think Berry Signs had suggested, but said also they could live with something as small as 20. And so we photoshopped in a 20-square-foot sign right in the middle there. And so that particular example, I know it's hard to read, but it's 24 inches tall by 10 feet wide. So if, for example, you look at the visibility chart that they provided to us, you go down to the, on the left-hand side here, that sign at 24 inches high could probably have 15-inch letters or 18-inch letters, which would have a readable distance for maximum impact of 150 to 180 feet, or a maximum readable distance of 630 feet to 750 feet. And on the chart over on the right, you can't read that, but basically that says that those sized letters can still be read for long enough to be understood. So, you know, for example, if you're driving along at 30 miles an hour, you can still read the sign for three, I think it's four seconds. And then there's speed, it's kind of speed rated, so. Upper wall story, wall signs, was another topic of discussion. You may recall that there was a sign proposal from Hope Works, and that included a number of different types of signs, including signs mounted to the top of the building, which the way the code was written at the time would not have been allowed for residential buildings. We took a closer look at that, and we changed the language to say it can be permitted for non-residential buildings, including mixed-use buildings. So you might, you would need to have basically non-residential uses on the ground floor. Residential on the upper floors is okay. And so we also lowered the lowest limit for which the sign could be permitted. It was previously 60 feet, and under this revised standards, it would be 40 feet. So here's that example. I know Berry Sign are the ones that are putting together the sign plan, and so we looked at this design under this revised language. That proposed sign on the left-hand side, I know it's hard to see, would be about 42 feet above the sidewalk grade on Broadway. So that'd be permitted. The square footage is okay as well. We also added some language that allows for a little bit diff, or a little bit additional flexibility in terms of determining what sign standards apply. For example, for signs that may meet the definition more than one sign, it gives a little bit of discretion to determine which sign it is in terms of its function, its location and orientation. So here's an example, another one for the Hope Works project. This is basically a parking sign for the parking garage, and it's attached to the building, so it projects. But it's also really kind of a directional sign, and that's really its primary function. So we think that this type of sign, even though the code may not allow for an additional projecting sign off the alley side of the building, in this case, it could be allowed as a directional sign. Electronic changing message signs, there were some confusing language in there, and so we did do some clarification as to colors and technologies that can be used to produce the changing message. I know that Berry has provided some comments as of today about something about the whole time and the duration, and I think their comments are specific to signs in residential zones, so we're going to attempt to clarify that with them. Didn't have time to do that today. We've also made a late change, which is not in your drafts, addressing temporary banner signs. We essentially suggested that the standards go back to what they are currently or close to it, which is 30 square feet, 32 square feet, for no more than a 30-day period during a 365 consecutive day period, so during one-year period. And that would be only for banners mounted to buildings. They would not be permitted on fences or other types of structures, between trees, that kind of thing. So you don't see that in your packets, but that will be in the next version that you So just to summarize, we do believe that the sign regulations will meet our streamlining goals and objectives in terms of consolidating everything down, making it easier to use, simpler. We reduced the number of sign categories. We eliminated a whole sign subchapter from the E1 zone. We pulled a lot of those regulations into the new sign chapter. Not all of them, but a lot of them we did, and so that will help sort of consolidate things in one place. We believe that the draft regulations will address the court mandates regarding content neutrality, particularly as it relates to temporary signs. And we've essentially, in our temporary signs section, grouped all different types of signs, for example, political signs, real estate signs, other, you know, special event signs, into one category so that we don't treat them differently. And then lastly, we believe that the changes really achieve a balance between the needs of property owners, sign companies, and the broader community in terms of maintaining good aesthetics and clutter management. Next steps would be planning commission action, hopefully, in two weeks. And for that, you would presumably see a resolution for the sign code, another resolution for other zoning changes, a third resolution for Title 15 change, I think there's only one, and then a fourth resolution for Title 18, and there's actually sign regulations in our subdivision ordinance, and we want to pull those out. So any questions at this point? I know it's a lot of information.
It is a lot of information. You guys have questions?
Yeah, I just, you answered one of the questions I had about political signs, real estate signs, construction signs are all subsumed under the temporary signs.
Correct.
I was looking at the definition of monument signs, and I'm questioning whether the language there is correct. Can't, I won't be able to find exactly what page it's on, but it's in your definitions I always think of monument signs as being low-profile signs, but the language in the definition says over five feet above grade, and I'm wondering if that's supposed to be under five feet.
Yeah, that's a good question. That's sort of holdover language from old code.
I know, I don't think it involves a change, but I just, it just, it didn't square with my understanding of what a monument sign is, and that's why I wondered if that language was accurate.
And I don't know what the magic is behind the five-foot number there, and maybe Alan knows.
Off the top of my head, I think we'll have to.
Look into that.
Talk about that and bring something back to you next meeting.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Commissioner McGinn, did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to say that I really appreciated the adjustments that were made because it seemed to satisfy the concerns that we heard from the sign businesses, but also seems really reasonable in terms of making those adjustments and simplifying. And so I was really pleased to see what you had presented.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Labra?
No.
I don't have any real questions. I was kind of curious about the electronic signs. I know that's becoming a more, because of LED, that's becoming a huge trend. And there's been no, I mean, I know we banned them outright, but there's been no interest or, I'm curious as to what the sign companies might have said about this.
Yeah, they did raise that at the last meeting, and I think there's two sets of provisions. One is for commercial districts, and there's another one for residential districts, and the rules are different. Seems as though most of the comments that we have gotten from Berry have referred back to the ones of residential districts. So that, those provisions have a greater hold time, it's like an hour, for a message, and limits the colors as well. And so we intend to have a discussion with them. Didn't have time to do it today, but to follow up and find out if that's specifically what the concern is and how we might address it versus commercial districts, which allow for colors, which don't have the same hold-time restrictions.
Right.
I think it's two seconds, one second, two seconds in commercial districts. And then we've also made some changes to allow them on freestanding signs, where in the first draft, we did not, so.
Yeah, and the reason why I'm asking is I can see a time where, because of the affordability, people want them even just for direction, just for ease of changing information, depending on how it's being used, or, so that's why I was kind of asking there. But that makes sense, and it sounds like the sign companies are already kind of addressing it, so. Does anyone else have further questions? I think we'll go ahead and open it up to public comments. I only have one person who's actually signed up to speak on this, so I'll call that person forward. Mr. Harris, could you? You signed?
It's been about five years. I last talked about Dark Skies Initiative, and I really wasn't going to bring it up tonight, but there was an interesting discussion on one of the social media sites today about dark skies, about leaving your house light on for safety and security. And the dark skies got thrown in there, and so I think it's critical that we remind everybody that it is important to a lot of people. There are a lot of opinions on both sides of what we're doing and where we need to go with dark skies. So I just, I haven't had time to read the draft here, which is my fault, but it may be in there, it may be included, but just to keep everybody on their toes as we move forward. The picture of Europe was yellow and red. There was no black in any of that, and so there are some issues with over illumination, improper illumination, light going up instead of down. I think you know where all that goes, but that's just something I'd like to throw up there because it is a community, a community concern, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak on this particular item? All right. I think, I think if anybody would like to move for closure of the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Labra?
Yes.
Chair back?
Yes. So at this point, do we have any other business that staff would like to talk about, or?
I'll mention one thing since it seems I've got a little bit of time this evening, and I did brief the city council a few weeks ago on the Vision 2040 update that the Puget Sound Regional Council is conducting, which they'll extend the growth, or the planning horizon out 10 years and naturally call it Vision 2050. The regional growth strategy is something that will shape how we amend our comprehensive plan under Growth Management, the Growth Management Act, that is. The regional council's Vision 2050 document will become the multi-county planning policies, and under GMA, our countywide planning policies must be consistent with that set of multi-county planning policies. And then our own comprehensive plans, individual communities' comprehensive plans have to be consistent with both the multi-county planning policies and the countywide planning policies. So a lot of jargon there, but the net result or end result is that we're going to have much higher growth targets in our next comprehensive plan update, which will be due in 2023. And one of the most frustrating parts about, between Vision 2040 and GMA, is that we have to plan for a 20-year planning horizon. So when we adopt a new plan in 2023, our growth targets will be 2043 instead of either 2040 or 2050. And so there have to be some interpolation between the numbers that we get from the PSRC for those various years. But the numbers that we have seen that are in draft and during this environmental impact statement review for the PSRC's update, they have three alternatives. One that they call stay the course, which would have the greatest amount of growth going into Everett, kind of following along the lines of the Vision 2040 document where it emphasized more growth in metropolitan centers like Everett, Bellevue, Seattle, Tacoma, and Bremerton, and less growth in smaller cities or in unincorporated areas. The reason that becomes an issue for us in Snohomish County is that we have a large unincorporated area south of Everett that is going to have two light rail stations from the sound transit. Three extension of light rail all the way up to Everett, there'll be a couple of stations in unincorporated areas. And while the Vision 2040 says minimize the amount of growth in unincorporated urban areas, we've got the infrastructure investment that suggests we should be putting a lot of growth near those transit stations. And so the second alternative they are using is something that we advocated for through Snohomish County, to mar all the cities and the county, to have a more transit-focused growth, which is what they're calling their second alternative. Their third alternative is one that would distribute more growth out to more outlying areas, which they're calling reset urban growth. And so even in that one, which has the least amount of growth in Everett, it would still add, I'm trying to remember the order of magnitude, but somewhere in the neighborhood of another 30,000 people on top of our 2035 growth targets, and probably about the same number of jobs under the low-growth scenario. The high-growth scenario is just continues to be one of those mysteries to me, is how anybody can imagine some of those numbers in Everett. But where we are in the process is we'll be presenting some, a draft letter for the city council to review. And I won't, since we haven't drafted it yet, I won't really get into what I think it's going to say, but just wanted to make you aware of that. It will shape some of our work program in the future, not immediately, but as we work toward 2023 and the next major update of our comprehensive plan.
Does anyone have questions? Yeah, right. There'll be plenty of time for that. I actually do, so is PSRC, there's a lot of road traveled at this point with, they've, this will be the fourth iteration, or is it the third iteration? And so in terms of showing the trends, there's a lot of road that's already been traveled, so are they going to actually kind of try to do a little bit of reflection in terms of this is what we planned for, this is what has happened, this is?
They, yeah, they are looking at, you know, what did we say was, we thought was going to happen, what actually has happened? And so that's part of the feedback that they have heard and that they, so that they will provide more information. The alternatives that they're looking at right now, the reason that they're taking the comments is just so that they can sort out amongst those three alternatives and create maybe a hybrid between those two, call a preferred alternative, and they will have a public outreach over the next year. They anticipate adopting it in either April or May of 2020. But, yeah, there are a lot of things that they thought were going to happen since, between 2008 and, obviously, they're looking out to 2040, but in the, the rate of growth, for example, in Everett has been much, much less than anticipated if you looked at a kind of a straight-line projection of growth. We just haven't seen that kind of growth because most of it's been going into areas that, where there's vacant land, a lot of unincorporated area growth. I think the capacity of the unincorporated urban growth area, at least in the south part of the county, they used up like 75% of their capacity in the first two years after they adopted their plan, just the rate of growth was so fast. And therefore, we weren't seeing a lot of growth here in Everett. We're seeing a little bit more now, a little bit more interest. There's actually now three cranes in Everett, two of them down on Broadway and one up for the county courthouse construction project. I may be missing others somewhere else in town, but we are seeing a little bit more interest. I don't know, did that answer your question?
It did, and it sounds like that they're being asked this and maybe even providing more graphic representations and things, just so they're easy to interpret. But it sounds like this is something they're considering when they come back to the public to talk about these alternatives.
Yeah, they will, and will keep reminding them of.
It's helpful because I think the first one was done in 2000 for 2020, if my recollection.
1995 was the first one, then 2008, and now we're going to do another one for 2020, in 2020. 2020, in 2020.
It's round three. All right, terrific. And with that, does anybody else have anything to add from staff? All right, well then, we'll adjourn. Thank you, everyone.